Councilor, your session to order today is Wednesday, February nineteenth, and it's promptly seven P M. So to stay with the tradition that we have so far with recognizing our hometown heroes or active and retired military. I have great honor in recognizing Mr. Joseph Hall for his public service and military contributions. So Joseph Hall has dedicated his life to military service, public service, and community advocacy. That just demonstrating exceptional leadership, commitment, and integrity throughout his career. His military service ranges from nineteen eighty-five to two thousand and two. The branches that he served are U S Navy, U S Marine Corps, Army, National Guard, and Reserves. His rank discharge was an E four. Primary roles were combat engineer, marine, security forces, infantry, armor. Commune, uh, company clerk, trainer, and recruiter. Deployments and assignments, uh, Catholic.
Catholic.
Thank you, Iceland, Okinawa, Thailand, Brunei, the Philippines, Panama, and South Korea. Honors and awards, there are many, as you can see up there. And so some are Navy Achievement Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Reserve Achievement Medal, National Defense Medals. Marine Good Conduct Medal, South Korea Defense Service Medal, Joint Metrice, a unit award among many others up there that you can see. Key military contributions and advocacy, so he served in the Marine Corps as a recruiter and a physical fitness trainer. Identified and fought against unfair promotion practices within the Army National Guard. Advocating for overlooked soldiers and ensuring they receive long overdue promotions and back pay. Engaged in counterterrorism training and served as Marine of the, uh, Marine of the Quarter in nineteen eighty-seven. Public service and community engagement. So Eagle Scouts, Boy Scouts of America Mentor, Member of Vet Tibet Center, Oregon Hunters Association. Iron, um, Ironside Animal Rescue and Superman Salvation Animal Rescue. Passionate advocate for veteran benefits, helped a veteran secure disability compensation after twenty-four years of denial. Confronting local veteran service officers who refused to assist. Strong supporter of youth outdoor activities and recently mentored a young hunter. It's pretty cool, using a hundred old family rifle to harvest his first elk, creating a lasting generational memory. Personal reflection and his lasting impact, so Joseph Hall holds a deep pride in his Marine Corps service. His most cherished moment being the day that he earned the Eagle Globe, excuse me, Eagle Globe and Anchor in nineteen eighty-six. He believes in standing up for those who are overlooked, ensuring fairness and supporting veterans who struggle to get the recognition that they deserve. His legacy includes not only military service, but also commitment to uplifting others. Whether through veteran advocacy, youth membership, or outdoor education. His unwavering dedication to helping others and his willingness to challenge injustice, making him deserving honorary for this recognition. To lead us to the, uh, in the pledge of allegiance today. So today I'd love to acknowledge Joseph Hall, if you can please stand up, we appreciate you and we honor you today.
I'd like to call the, the youth up here to help me because the youth is the future. Well, up here.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be.
Right.
She'll do it.
You all will join us.
Would allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here and allowing us to honor you. Love that. All right, so moving on to visit our comments, so now's the time for visitor comment. Because their comment period is essential for our local government meetings, each person has three minutes to speak. The council will take input into consideration, how in, however, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws. This isn't a time for dialogue, but it's time for us to listen to you. Um, our city administrator and reporter will be taking notes of action if needed and will follow to you. So it's important that you sign in on the sheet in the back so that we have your contact information. So we, if there is any action items, we know how to contact you. And at this time, we'll bring up whoever would like to speak.
Sure, I gotta make some corrections to the, the, the wards that you saw in the display cases, that's one of my passions.
Okay.
And, um, I do them, you know, from veterans who lose medals, they, I replace them. I do the research on their units, I, you know, dig deep to find them. Those were just some of the display cases ranges from, you know, Bron Star all the way up to the Navy Cross. And I'm currently working on a, um, a person that was, uh, back east who is, uh, put in for the medal honor and he's still on the waiting list from Iraq. And I've got one veteran in the back that I helped, Brandon Cisco. Uh, he's one of my veterans that I helped, you know, get his benefits after many years, Iraqi veteran. And I'd like to present this to, um, the city of Saint Helens in honor of the veterans of our community. Starting with World War One Service Medal. World War Two Service Medal. The Women's Service Medal for women in the armed forces, the first time they were recognized with their own award was during World War Two, the Korea Service Campaign, the Vietnam Campaign, Southwest Asia Campaign, the Iraq Campaign, Afghanistan Campaign, the National Defense and the POW MIA, which is big in, you know, the, you know, any veterans, especially in the Vietnam War area. And I want to just, just, you know, present this to the, the city for veterans and their families in Columbia County.
Love that. Oh.
And there is one of the medals, it is backwards, the Afghanistan Campaign became, uh, first before the Iraqi campaign.
Can you, will you hold this and get a picture with us? Can somebody, we're gonna, we're gonna just do this because we, Crystal's not here. Yeah, so. Yeah, Joe, can you take a picture?
He's like, all right.
Yeah, this is amazing.
Are we supposed to?
What?
Is it just you guys?
Oh, the council, no. Makes sense. We can make it work.
Up in there.
Yeah. We got all in here? We're counting on you, Joe.
Okay.
Still's gonna be judging you.
Yeah, I, I can't be.
Go farther.
I think it's a winner.
Thank you.
And I do these for veterans in need, if, and I, I do it at no cost to the veteran and their families. So, and I probably have, you know, if you were to go into my, uh, office, they would accuse me of stolen valor because I have every medal known to mankind from military service from World War One all the way up to present. And I keep updated as far as the, the accuracy of the awards, how they go.
Thank you.
So anybody that wants to reach out to me, feel free.
That's right up your alley right here. Thank you so much for doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Anybody else with public comment? If you could state your names for the record.
Brady's gonna hand out some stuff for me, Tammy Magra. There was some comments made today that somebody on Facebook was putting out false information, I want to take the credit for that. But let me assure you, it wasn't false information, it was nothing but factual. Right here on the approved minutes of January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, Counselor Hubbard asked what would happen if the levy fails for the police station? Uh, Counselor Gunderson agreed with the increase of sixty-nine cents per thousand. And if that doesn't pass, they can add it to the utility bill. So what I said on Facebook is factual and Brady is gonna play a couple clips of that. So in case you forgot or don't want to stand up.
Pardon me?
You mean on the, on the utility, if you have ten dollars, twenty-five dollars?
Increasing to twenty-five dollars, so ten dollars would go for the debt service and fifteen dollars would go for um, public safety.
The levy always passes for Columbia City, always.
Here's the second clip.
It's not clicking with me or registering with me. What we're asking is, but it does give the voting public the ability to pass that and have their votes heard.
Oh, I agree with that, I agree with that, yeah, I understand that part too, that's why.
You know, I mean, the levy always passes for Columbia City, always. And, uh, the county's first levy, it passed, so. Well, by my motion, if this doesn't, this does not pass, then we'll go to the utility thing.
But it may be a hybrid of sorts too, and you do a little bit.
So I don't know why.
Recognize the shoe.
Yeah.
Well, I'll say is, did it go on the utility? That's hot.
But you said it.
Right now it's not time for public, or.
And, uh, and I want to also make a comment on public comment. Every one of you guys receive approximately over a thousand dollars a month to listen to the public, whether you like what they have to say. Whether you agree with what they have to say, this is American, the First Amendment right, we can say, have our opinions in public form. And I think to squelch that is a disservice. Mayor Massey, you have been on this side defense before you were elected. And I have seen you come in here and attack Mr. John Walsh demanding for his resignation and many other things. So you ran on accountability and transparency. And I think if you squelch the public, try to, try to squelch the public comment, then you're being a hypocrite. Also, uh, on the executive session thing, you're gonna make a decision on that, and I know how that's gonna turn out. But let me just make this clear. Every one of you or just about every one of you has been on Brady and I's radio show, nine A M. to ten A M. every Friday we air on Kohi. And some of you's been on for two hours when we shared the show with Ms. Bernhardt. For your campaigns, you said you wanted to get out, message out to the people? And you were given that opportunity and you used our show as a news and media source. Mayor Massey, you've also been on our show numerous times, one time was when your husband was running for sheriff. And you wanted to get the information out, you also have been on our show numerous times for your other pet project, and I won't mention it. So unless you, all of you that's been on the show thinks that it was useless, why did you waste your time coming on our show? That's what I would like to know. With no, with no papers in town, how do you expect the people to get any information out? Right now, you know, we do our best, we get public documents and we report on it. So all I can say is that, uh, there's more to this, either you're doing it deliberately to try to orchestrate to silence the people? Or you don't understand. And I'd also like to say, I'd like to give a shout, a shout to a hometown hero. And that's Chief Hoag for being a whistleblower, and I appreciate everything that he's done to bring honesty into the Saint Helens Police Department. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And Brady's gonna take his time.
Um, yeah, so, uh, my name is Brady Prey, I'm, I also want to follow up with Tammy and, and thank Chief Hoag. He, I think he is a hometown hero frankly, and, uh, has been underappreciated for many years. And again, urge you to, uh, make his position permanent. Um, I am also, uh, greatly opposed to your conversation this afternoon about censoring public comment. Um, it's not okay, any way, shape, or form, again, that's your job. If you don't like what we say, oh, well, you know where the door is, you can resign, you can leave. You, Jennifer, in particular knows exactly, uh, this is me asshole level two. Try and tell me or not tell me what I can and can't say and see what asshole level I can be. And you are a personal person, uh, know exactly how big of an asshole I can be when you try and tell me what I can and cannot say. In addition to that, uh, it's just plain wrong, it's not transparent. And, uh, it's what you have to do, and if you don't like it, oh, well. Um, I also, uh, want to say that, um, the executive session is a time when I actually agree rarely with Adam. Um, both of your attorneys, ha- how, your attorney has written a, uh, memo about Tammy Magra and F A F O D D S. And said that they are recommended that they not be approved. We don't have a paper. We don't have media, there is no paper here, the only media, even the spotlight, doesn't have an office here. That's just the reality, the only local media we have is Kohi. So obviously Tammy needs to be approved and you need to. In addition to that, although Adam actually does throw spaghetti at the wall and all that, I don't agree with that. But they are on occasion a news source, they're right, he says seventy-five percent, it's more like twenty-five percent. Uh, following up with that, by the way, uh, one of the many things that he and you have been wrong about. Uh, this is the title to this three Twilight Truck. You have a copy, John, do you have a copy? No, you don't, because I have the title. The title was given to me when I handed the guy a check from my account for this truck. So before you start spreading lies or Adam starts spreading lies, uh, you should probably do a little bit more research about, about, um, you know, what you're, what you're saying and, and not be one of the spreaders of lies. Uh, because that's the title to the truck. Um, and so, but, uh, I do agree that both Tammy and them should be, even though they do spread misinformation, they are one of the few opportunities that we have, uh, for public to get information out in this community, and while I don't like what your page does at all, um, it is occasionally right, maybe ten percent of the time, so I guess that's better than nothing.
For the record. Good evening, Jenny Gilbert, citizen. Actually didn't write anything up tonight because I had a hard time gathering my thoughts. Um, first of all, I'm not gonna even call you mayor, because you don't deserve it. You cheated your way in. Um, your group is being run improperly and you understand that, you should not be in the executive sessions. Um, you're not right most of the time, and you block people off your page that do have information. Um, and we have checked with Oregon Ethics Commission and stuff and you'd be violating rules if you did. Um, I would be in support of Kohi because they are a limited news source here, you can laugh. Um, second of all, counsel, I am really disappointed in the police investigative report where you decided not to, where you decided to vote to redact the names, because you allowed the mayor to vote on that, and she was in the report. And you guys are aware of that because you read it, you should have released that on redacted. And I have talked to you guys, and you have been warned now that you know what you're sitting up there with. It was not only the chief, okay, there was things that I understand going on in the police department that should not have been. But you are sitting with the person that instigated the majority of that and let that man fall for what went on. I appreciate Chief Hoag for doing the investigation. I hope that he is aware that Mayor Massey does not support him for chief, and that she has tried to undermine him several different times. I'm hoping that you guys are all very aware of what is going on now, and you watch yourselves with her because she may smile and play nice, but she's not. And you owe John Walsh an apology, because you sat here at this very table repeatedly for the things that you're trying to silence now in executive sessions, saying that it was all invalid and that you shouldn't even had the opportunity to come up here and talk, okay? So why are you trying to silence people now? You owe John Walsh an apology. You lied to a whole group of people, and I had, I had to play catch-up this whole past week and a half, I had people calling and crying over the Saint Helens Police Department. Can we trust these guys, we don't know what's going on, this is horrible. And you know, I said to them honestly, about two or three of those guys, I hope that you guys follow up with an investigation because they were named in that investigation, they also need to be followed up on. However, I firmly believe that we still have a solid police department, not all of those police were behind Jen Massey, just so you know. They, some of them, they got deceived, just like I did with some of the stuff that she was doing, okay? We need to support our police department now, and I hope that you follow up with the rest investigations with what went on down there. And there's a lot of investigations going on behind the scene, and you need to be prepared to take over for mayor because it may happen. I really, really want you guys to understand what's going on, I appreciate you guys, I appreciate you running for reelection, I think you all do a good job. But you guys need to be very aware now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment.
Adam St. Pierre. Well, I listened to the work session today, and there's some cool little quotes, you know, we have a supposed media source around here that like to throw stuff at the wall and see what sticks. Um, he liked to keep using the word disgustingly unethical, you know, in reference to our mayor. Um, I personally don't think we should have released the whole police report on Greenway because there's stuff in there, I don't think the general public can actually comprehend what was going on. It's a pretty diverse thing, but transparency kind of needed to be done. But I wish they would actually understand what they're reading. So I have a little couple pages here, I'm sure you guys have all read it, but I'll start on page seven where it says, and he calls me and says, hey, blank, hey, him and the council were having a falling out. They were fighting, Rick had me, Rick had made some statement in public meeting against Greenway like, hey, where's our chief, I've got issues. So he calls me and says, hey, the council's fucking up, I need you to go to blank, who was, I believe, he was running for sheriff or not yet for sheriff, I can't remember. If, if he was or wasn't, my timeline's not good, not going to be very helpful on that. And he said, I want you to have his wife write an anonymous letter to council about our staffing and how much they suck. And so on. And so on, and so forth. And I went, okay, I hang up. And then I said, so in my brain, is this, I'm this guy's supervisor and my chief of police wants me to ask him to have his wife write an anonymous letter to the city council. That is disgustingly unethical, like, I'm not doing that. So I don't know if the particular individual this afternoon who read that doesn't comprehend that he was talking about the chief's actions there. But that's how I read that, and it's on page, top line on page eight. So just in case there was any question, it later goes on, it says, uh, do you know if he ever, uh, he, he ever did write the letter or she did, yeah, she did, oh, she did, okay, somebody did, they signed it anonymously. That's on page eight, so unknown at that point, same officer here. Next paragraph, that night, the letter gets read from, it's anonymously signed, an officer's wife. It comes from some email called scappusthreehundred@gmail.com, which was apparently a spoof email that kept emailing the council. Three hundred, the number three hundred with a scappus police chief's radio number that Greenway hated. He hated Norm Miller, the scappus police chief. Matter of fact, he told people in the staff meeting one time that he would punch Norm in the face if he could, and he hated that guy. So when we all saw the email, it said scappusthreehundred@gmail, we were like, really, I mean, that's the chief you hate. So let's go to page nineteen real quick. It says, so, we go to the city of Saint Helens for a loan, starting the process, mind you, this is the same officer. The council gets an anonymous, anonymous email from scappusthreehundred@gmail, at Gmail account, and that email, at that email, the person calls it C C F R, right? We couldn't loan C C F R any money. I know that was Greenway who wrote that from the scappusthreehundred account, because that's what he always called Columbia River. So the same person just admitted that he knew that that email was Greenway the whole time. But apparently reading comprehension isn't part of the, you know, vocabulary or the understanding of some of the media sources in this town that claim to be media. So, thank you.
Public comment. Anybody on Zoom? All right, we are moving on then. So we have the final reading, uh, so number one, it's the final reading for ordinance number three, three, zero, seven. An ordinance amending the Saint Helens Municipal Court of Chapter, Code Chapters seventeen point one six, seventeen point three two, seventeen point eight zero, and seventeen point nine six pertaining to the Oregon House Bill three, three, nine, five, twenty, twenty-three regarding single room applications and other, uh, housekeeping amendments.
This requires a motion, right, final reading?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three, three, zero, seven as read.
Second.
Perfect, so we have a motion and a second, Counselor, uh, sending. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunderson, Counselor Hubbard, and I as well. Uh, so moving on to resolution, so resolution, uh, twenty thirty-seven, a resolution of the common and council of Saint Helens, right, common council, okay, common council of the city of Saint Helens adopting executive session news media attendance policy and replacing in its entirety, resolution thousand and one.
I move, we approve resolution number twenty thirty-seven as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Gunderson, Counselor Hubbard, and I as well. All right, so, resolution twenty thirty-eight, a resolution adopting the city of Saint Helens governing policy, wait, this one's out. Never mind, let me move back up to this one, so we are not doing number three, number four, resolution twenty thirty-nine, resolution to adopt financial policies for the city of Saint Helens superseding resolution eighteen oh six.
Make motion to adopt resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor. And I'm a I as well. Okay, and then, um, so we have requests for approval to attend executive sessions. The number five, consideration of application of Tammy Magra to qualify as a representative of the news media to attend council executive sessions.
Move that we, um, approve. Right, to talk about it?
Well, are they in the, we can't.
Require motions to discuss.
Do we do it independently? Yeah, do them independently.
Independently seems appropriate.
Yeah. So we need to make a motion. To discuss.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, um, that, um, in consideration of the application from Tammy Magra to qualify as a representative of the news media to attend council executive sessions.
Discussion. I didn't hear, was that approve or deny?
Deny. Still seconding that?
Instead of to consider, right, so.
It says we have to decide.
I say either way, we have to. Yeah, either way, we have to.
Discussion.
I, from, from what, uh, everything that qualifications are. That high of a bar.
Man, I, um, read through everything that, um, our city attorney went through for each one of these. And, um, I think her cases that she made for each one that she looked into were pretty reasonable. And, um, I, on all of them, I'm going to likely side with the, uh, you know, attorney. Um, so in this case, I am agreeing to deny this application based off what our attorney found, which is that it's not an institution, this person doesn't represent news media from an institution point of view, there's lots of things there.
There's lots of things there noted in her findings in the memo.
I also leaning towards the advice of the, our legal counsel for same reasons. And in my opinion, if somebody's denied, that doesn't mean that there's not things that could be corrected and they could apply again, but again, the institution, um, the structure of the organization. The big one for me is fact versus opinion. I think a new source I really think needs to lean more towards facts than opinion. That's why I'm leaning towards following, following their advice.
Counsel Hubbard.
I agree with the attorney's choice.
I think there's things outlined, so I do think it, you know, the, the challenge is that we don't have a newspaper out here. And as much as it pains me to say the fact that, you know, there's gotta be a way to disseminate in, information. For what the resolution and the application say, there's stuff that is not complete. Right, in the application. So I echo the fact that there's stuff that potentially could be rehabilitated so that everything can be reviewed on a consistent basis for approval. And then there's the lawyer, our attorney's recommendation on some of the stuff that wasn't done. So the, I think the application could probably be really looked at, but also, um, the opinion piece of that as well. Now there's some facts mixed with a lot of opinion. But overall, I think that the, the areas that were identified by the attorney that did not it were not demonstrated by the requirements are where they're at, so. That's where I was at. So at this time, I would side with our attorney as well.
Could you please rephrase the motion?
I'm going to make a motion to deny the application from Tammy Magra to qualify as a representative of the, of the news media to attend council executive session.
We got a motion, we got a second. Counselor Sandin.
Oh, yes.
Uh, Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Uh, Gunnerson, Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well. Um, and then I, I am gonna have Counsel President Chilton take over for six. I, I have a conflict of interest for the application for F A F O D D S considering uh, I'm a part of that nonprofit organization. So, um, I'm gonna, you guys wanna just tap me as soon as you guys get that piece done, I will head back in. Great, thank you. You all wanna make a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to deny the application for F F, F A F F, F A F O D D S.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Don't need the qualifications.
The qualifications and don't need anymore.
My thoughts are similar. They've showed that they are, they are a nonprofit. They submitted proof of that, but um, again, there's questions about the institution, about their structure, designated roles. They did show there is a board. So I think it's, it doesn't quite meet the qualifications that are laid out.
I agree with that. I mean, it's pretty similar to the other ones. And so if we were gonna accept one, I feel like then we would consider all of them in this case because I feel like the criteria was pretty much the same for these, um, for the standards that we have set, so we'll go ahead and call it to a vote. Counsel Sandin.
Aye.
Um, Counsel Gunnerson. Or Counsel Hubbard, sorry. Aye, and I'm a I as well. Okay, we're on to seven.
All right, so number seven. Consideration of the application of Maxine Bernstein of the Oregonian to qualify as a representative of the news media to attend, attend council executive sessions.
Motion to approve the application for Maxine Bernstein, Maxine Bernstein of the Oregonian. To qualify as a representative of the news media. Attend council sessions.
Need discussion.
I think this one was, um, presented, you know, with the credentials, um, and the organization, the structure of the organization with the Oregonian. I don't know how long they've been around, but they've been around a very long time. And she had the proof that she is a journalist for them and I, I think she, she met the criteria of someone who, you know, is going to report facts and hopefully, share things in the community, you know, and in, in the state.
See, for me, it's not a question of, on all of these, it's not a question of are they a radio station or do they report on the news? Because that's true for all of these. They all report on the news in their own way. It's, did they meet the qualifications that were laid out? And so, me, uh, this one did.
So we had a motion, we had a second. Counselor Sandin.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson. All right, approve and or authorize for signature, number eight. Fourth amendment, fourth amendment to contract with more excavation incorporated for, um, South First Street in St. Helens. Street intersection improvements are six eighty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve and or authorize for signature, fourth amendment to contract with more excavation incorporated for South First Street, St. Helens Street Intersection Improvements Project R sixty-five.
So we have a motion, second. Counselor Sandin.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson. Counsel Hubbard. And I might as well. Okay, extension of agreement with Mayor Reed Incorporated for Riverwalk Project Phase One in Columbia View Amphitheater.
I may move, we approve and or authorize for signature, number nine, extension of agreement with Meyer Reed Incorporated for Riverwalk Project Phase One in Columbia View.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Uh, Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well. Number ten, appointment Trina Kingsbury to the planning commission.
I move, um, to approve this appointment of Trina Kingsbury to the planning commission.
Right, motion and second, Counselor, uh, Sandin. Counsel Gunnerson. Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well. All right, consent agenda for acceptance. Number eleven, library board meet, uh, minutes dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Number twelve, library board flood committee minutes dated February first, twenty twenty-five. Number thirteen, Parks and Trails Commission minutes dated January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I move that we accept consent agenda items eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Counselor Sandin.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. I'm a I as well. Consent agenda for approval, number fourteen, city council minutes dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-four, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and February fifth, twenty twenty-five. Fifteen, number fifteen, request for proposal for water reservoir site selection and design, number sixteen, accounts payable bill list.
I move, we approve consent agi- agenda items fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, as read.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Counselor Sandin.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Uh, Counsel Gunnerson. And Counsel Hubbard. I'm a I as well. We are on to work session actin- action items.
Right, the first one we have up is Project Arcadia. We're discussing moving this project along. Um, there is one amendment that we're looking to, um, amend some of the details in the purchase and sell agreement with Arcadia Paper Mills. So I'm gonna go ahead and put that motion on the table. I move to approve and or authorize for signature amendment number one to purchase and sell agreement with Arcadia Paper Mills LLC.
We have a motion, we have, uh, second, Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Gunnerson. Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well.
I make a motion to move visitor comments for the regular session to the end of the meeting rather than the beginning.
The regular session.
I second that.
We want any discussion.
Yeah, so kind of explaining, I think, a little bit of our thought earlier about why we would wanna do this is, um, we've been doing the hometown hero thing in the beginning and a lot of times when we are appreciating staff for their, you know, service and stuff, it's usually in the beginning of the meeting and so we feel like it may be better to start the meeting off on a good foot and maybe end it in a more open manner that allows for dialogue at the end of the meeting as well. So I think that's kind of the general consensus of why we, we would be moving this around.
Yeah, it's not a squelching public comment or we would make a decision just not to have it at all. But, because we're not required to, but that's not what we want. First Amendment speech. But the, to create, to create a more positive environment, the strategic planning showed that the morale was so way to foster that is more acknowledgement of hometown heroes and people. And so that's where that dialogue came from.
And then, I mean, it's, we'll maybe try it out. If it's not working out or if there's any bumps with it, we can always change it back. I think it's just to see if this may flow a little bit better for, for the evening meetings, so.
Yeah, people can still make comments. Or let it just change the tone.
Or does anyone else have any, have I thoughts or?
All right, we're on to it. We had a motion, we had a second. Counselor Sandin.
Aye.
Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well.
I move to have city department division reports included in the work session packets once a month in a condensed version on a council approved template.
All right, so we had a motion, second. Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counselor Gunnerson.
Aye.
Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well.
I move to have reports from community agencies be annual rather than semi-annual.
So we had a motion, a second. Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Gunnerson. Counsel Hubbard. Who seconded that? Who made the motion?
Jessica.
Then I move to add clearing confusion and setting the facts straight on the work session agendas before visitor comments.
Second down.
All right, so do we all have discussion?
I was, yeah, can we clarify what this is a little bit?
Yeah, this is where there's sometimes public comment that comes up or there's stuff that is said that can be by the facts or provide the resources to create, uh, like reduce and eliminate the misinformation that's put out there. So when things are like, let's say for example, that you have somebody that comes in and says, you know, the meeting minutes are not like transcribed a hundred percent. That's not required for Oregon meeting law as long as it's recorded, which is requirement, you know, that we can actually have that and then put a hyperlink to where they can find the actual information or if it's something related to the city or the waterfront or whatever the case is, it, it would help with that.
Okay, so it wouldn't be a back and forth dialogue with us and, you know, okay, so it would be something that would be added to the next work, work session agenda? Okay, I'm just making sure I'm getting it straight, how it's gonna work.
You've staffed at least two weeks to come up with a response and to say this was brought up in our last meeting. It's not quite correct. Here's where you can go find the facts. And again, it'll be read during our meeting and then also available on the website so that if it ever does come up again, people can be directed to the website and be able to find the information.
Allow, allow an opportunity for clarification. When stuff comes in and there's no way to, you know, review it or provide clarifying information, there's
I think just like letting the people know that they can expect to have an answer on that next agenda. An answer.
And again, I don't think who's gonna maintain all that.
So that was the conversation we had with staff, so they've already said that that's feasible.
And again, I think we don't have to write a book for each question that comes up, but when somebody comes in and says, and you say your three minutes are up and they say, well, you're taking away my free speech. Just explain that public comment is not required. We're, we, we wanna have it, we we all feel strongly about having public comment, but there, there can be rules and this is why, just little things like that. When people come in and continue to say the same things that aren't right, it would be nice to get the correct information out there for people to look at.
Or like explaining that things like increases on the water ball, water, water bill have to be discussed, motioned on, approved, put through guidelines, not just talked about theoretically. I think that would be good.
So we had a motion, we had a second. Counselor Sandin. Counsel President Chilton.
Aye.
Counsel Gunnerson, Counsel Hubbard. And I'm a I as well. For the action items, right? All right, we're on the council member reports. Counsel Sandin.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot I wanted to mention, but, um, our last Parks and Trails meeting, we, we had, have an opening. We were supposed to have a couple of interviews take place, but they were canceled due to illness, so that, that'll be happening at next month's meeting. Um, there are a couple of work parties coming up. Uh, in March, there's gonna be one at the Nob Hill Nature Park and then they're planning maybe for April for the Japanese gardens in McCormick Park. And then if it's okay with you, mayor, I was hoping Joe, you could tell us a little bit about your day coming on at the police department today.
Yeah, we, we've, uh, developed a wellness program that, um, probably should have been done maybe years ago, but, uh, it really is about changing the culture and giving, you know, time to, um, do some fitness things while on duty, more of a, of a fire, fire department model. Which I, I've wanted to do on the police side of things for years and years, so. Uh, part of that was developing a, a wellness coordinator, which, uh, we, we tapped Everardo Medina. He's our code enforcement officer for this and he's been at it. I mean, we've, uh, been able to get a bunch of donations for equipment. And, uh, the police association really stepped up and, and did something positive here and, uh, with some of their money bought some brand new equipment. And part of that though is to, you know, get some people to give us some fitness advice and instruction and all that, so. Uh, Everardo reached out to, uh, a really well-known, uh, influencer who owns a gym in, uh, Hillsboro who came out and, um, really, I mean, he, he, it was great. I mean, it was kinda, kinda red carpet for us, really. He gave us quite a bit of, uh, swag and, uh, more equipment and some instruction and that's gonna continue, so. Um, that's the thing, right? When you change culture, it's not just a, a one-shot deal and, you know, put some mats on the ground. It's about changing everything and changing, um, lifestyle outside of work and, you know, changing, um, you know, some of the habits while you're at work and so. Uh, we've been at this for months and, and it's really starting to shape up and, um, it was really meaningful to go down the line, uh, of the officers that have been taking advantage of this for the past, uh, you know, what, four months and, um, here's the amount of pounds that have been lost and muscle that's, that's been put on too, so I'm, I'm, I'm really proud of it and, um, it's again, it's well saying that when you just say, hey, you know, we ought to be healthier and, you know, we ought to do this more, that's one thing, but when you give them the tools and, um, this of course has, uh, the aspect of, of having some people from the private sector helping out too and, and really getting excited about it and contributing as well, so. We got, we're seeing good things.
Thanks for sharing. Thanks for all you do. Um, we do have our police banquet coming up. We weren't able to hold it last year, so excited to see that coming back. I think it's a great opportunity to recognize our men and women of our police department, so looking forward to that. That's all I've got.
Okay. I, um, met with our event coordinator, um, Treadwave recently, which I'm gonna start doing on a regular basis. So I have an update for you all from them. Um, they have started planning thirteen nights. They've got their event dates confirmed. They have all their bands lined up. They are bringing some new bands and lots of returning favorites. Um, they're saying six, five is their kickoff day. Um, they got Wana, um, who stepped up for sponsoring the event. They're also the main stage sponsor for Fourth of July. Um, we happen to be, uh, our events happen to be the biggest, uh, sponsorship that Wana provides at all, so it's really amazing that they were able to get them back and, um, participating in, um, multiple events now. Um, the fireworks are all set up. They're planning to have live bands, local food vendors, um, uh, merch vendors, beer garden and a kid-friendly entertainment area. They've started Halloween town, uh, planning, um, they have plans to make the event more like the movie this year, so they're doing some changes. They've started Halloween Town planning, they have plans to make the event more like the movie this year, so they're doing some changes with some of the decor and some of the locations of certain events, so they'll have more coming, and their celebrity lineup will hopefully be coming out soon as well. They've been updating their PR plan for the new year, and they are working on updating and expanding the gift shop, so that's what they've been up to.
I, I don't have a lot, we had some really good candidates, it seems to be happening across, I think all of our boards and commissions are getting really, really good qualified and driven people that wanna be on these boards, we had three great candidates for planning commission, and Trina was selected, and I was happy about that. Like I said, I don't have much to report, but Jennifer Puck, there's a shoemaker, we are having garbage cans, it is in the plan for downtown, so I wanted to look at that, I'll tell her, but, just wanna bring that to you, Russ. You know. Sit beside you, that's all I do. Well, I think the selection is great on the planning commission, she's a, a local person, I, I think she's in a new job. I worked, I used to work for Oregon, or, uh, Vezzer Steel over in there, and so I think she'll be good from the standpoint of where, where she comes from and her fitness, and she's from other side of the tracks. We were joking about that mother, because she's, she's across thirty, and so, it's great for the planning commission, because they're a little heavy over on this side, so I think that really helps for, you know, decisions they can make.
Uh, so I wanna start out and thank staff, so Kathy and Lisa for doing what you do, because seeing behind the curtain, you guys do a lot, and I appreciate that. And John, and also thank you to you for being as responsive, I have, as you've been in a prompt and responding to your questions or things that have come up. Also, a huge shout out to public works and police over this, you know, apocalypse that we got here, because they, you know, did those, to keep us safe and that people will maybe want and cozy and doing this, no, inside, they were, you know, outside doing their thing, so, much appreciated, Ben. And, in general, the work session we had yesterday, I, I really love the, me personally, the, the way that the council, the direction the council is going, on trying to be more action make more efficient for staff, and the things that, I mean, things could have been on a list for a while, like town hall, and, and being able to actually facilitate that and start moving towards that, to get that off the ground and going, as well as just other task-related things that we can help better the, the community, for the state, and what we're elected for, right, and that will lead into other things like economic vitality, and so I'm really looking forward to the next session, that we can all sit down and actually start putting some our dates and step on that for some percent, or, for some, our action items. Also, like, as a council, like, we're not going to be told what we're going to do. We are, we're up here as the governing body, and we listen and we make the decisions, like, this collaborative group here, so, I think we have a pretty good idea of the things that, you know, on the agenda, and I love the fact that we're putting so much thought and having the dialogue about things, you know, there's been a lot of questions, obviously, with having an interim chief, and that's just always been hanging out there, but, you know, the, the reality is too, is that has been communicated on, you know, where we're at with that, and we, we need to get our governing body, you know, we need to get updates, we need to do some things first, after, you know, what had just recently happened, so, while people may think that because we're sitting essentially in silence, there's things that we have identified as issues or opportunities to improve or things we need to correct that we're doing first, and because it came out and it's not true, also, like, I appreciate interim Joe Hoag, I've had many conversations with him directly, and we've had conversations where I've expressed some of my concerns, and just like Mr. Walsh up here, that, you know, it's working towards going forward in a positive direction, and having those dialogues and that honest and candid feedback is a two-way street, and it's vitally important, so while people can't see what's going on in the background, there's actually a lot going on, and it's in a positive direction for the city. So, I'm just overall excited the way that this, this council is operating, and much what I have for today. Otherwise, John, did you have anything?
I didn't have anything prepared.
Did you have anything?
I heard you did.
Yeah, did you have anything you wanna add?
I don't have anything additionally, thank you.
All right. Yep, this meeting is adjourned.